July 12th, 2012 Longview City Council Meeting. Tonight, we're proud to have for our prayer and pledge Ashton Wagner with Girl Scout Troop number 1565, and their troop leader is Mel Decotta. Would you please stand?
Please join me in the prayer. Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. On my honor, I will try to serve God and my country, to help people at all times, and to live by the Girl Scout law.
Good job. Thank you all. Thank you all. Okay, some familiar speakers to speak tonight. Victoria Wilson, would you come up tonight? And pull that hat back, I can't see your face. Oh, I'm just kidding.
Good evening. Good to see you all. And I've had great memories of, well, I'd like to say being as Girl Scout, that too, but Girl Scout camp is a lot more fun. I just want tonight, first of all, Mayor Dean, thank you, Mr. Willard, and Ms. Williams, and councilman, for the opportunity and privilege of being a citizen of Longview in District Three. And I'd like to do, say something a little ahead of time, but I'd just like to congratulate Detective Hewitt. He's an extraordinary example of someone that's very committed to our community, and I had, I guess you'd say, the opportunity for him to be of help to me a number of years ago, and I appreciate that, and I'm glad we have him, to serve with the Longview Police With all the lightning strikes and the weather, and I had lightning strike my house a few weeks ago, and I've had lots of things have to be replaced, and I just felt compelled to come and say before the community and the city council, what an extraordinary group of people we have in city services. Now, I did tell them I'd recommend a raise for all of them, so I'm just going to say that because I told them I would. Probably not going to happen.
Continue on, Ms. Wilson.
I know, but, and Ms. Hill always tells me not to name names, but I'm going to specifically talk about, first of all, the Public Works Department, and they have just been, they were extraordinary in their help with me. Bulk pickup for the loss of a tree, they lost some kind of a wire on the truck, and they waited, the next truck came, and they didn't leave until the job was completed and finished. City inspectors have had to come out to inspect all the work that's had to be done to the house and the things that have had to be replaced, electricity, air conditioning, plumbing. And they've all been kind, they've been cordial, they've gone over the line, and it just really pleases me to live in a community where people come out when you call them, I call Ms. Williams when we had a terrible tree on Noel, and she responded to me immediately. Fire department responded at that call, which was a couple of days ago. And anyway, I just think they don't get enough praise, and I just wanted to be sure that the community, when they're watching this, feels free to call and let all their councilmen know, or the mayor know, or the city know, we have an extraordinary staff and group of people that help keep this community together. And lastly, my grandsons come and go to Laterno's camps in the summer, and I just wanted to give a special thank you to Officer Roger Askew, and also, of course, to Chief Dingler, and the SWAT team, and just, I'm almost through, the gentleman they call Papa, which is Commissioner Mathis. And that police academy is wonderful, and Laterno does a great job in our police department. You know, the people go, the officers and detectives go out there, I think without pay, it's a volunteer service, but they need to be commended for that. And thank you for letting me thank the city offices and you as well for your service.
Thank you, Victoria. Okay, Vic Verma.
Thank you, Mayor Dean, members of council. I just wanted to make a brief announcement. Tomorrow evening here in Longview, on Amy Street, which is, I believe, a couple blocks north of Plyer Precise Road, off of Judson Road, the new Longview mosque will be having their open house from four to six p.m. It's an opportunity for folks to come and meet neighbors of a different faith, for many, and to get to know some new people, and get to learn about, learn about our neighbors in the Muslim faith. As it so happens, tomorrow also happens to be the beginning of Ramadan, so it's another opportunity to learn, and most importantly, to interact with our fellow man here in town, interact with folks of different faiths and different beliefs, but also to grow in our diversity and unity. Thank you.
Okay, Vic, thanks. Lawrence Horn.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Everybody.
To me, okay. Is it a check?
I hate to be a rain on parade. My name is Lawrence Horn, I live at 2008 West Street here in the city of Longview, Texas. I have a complaint, I'm trying to erect a problem about some of the police officers here in the city of Longview. They're not calling names right now because I'm scheduled to have a pre-trial September the fourth at nine o'clock in the morning. I was over in the South Longview area during the Juneteenth Festivity on the seventeenth, me and some church members, and we was approached by some officers that said that we was violating city code ordinance, as a noise violation. And when I asked them what part of the violation of the ordinance was I doing, they said I was too loud, so I asked them if they had a decimal reader to measure the sound that they had, that they was hearing, they told me they didn't own one. I said, yes, you do own one, because I'm the reason why you got it. I've been doing street ministry in South Longview for the past thirteen years. I've been in this council meeting about this very thing back in 2000, and we erected a problem, we came up with a conclusion, and so I kept a copy of that city ordinance with me until this very day, and when I presented it to the officers to show them, as we were having this special event, that I had a right, under the exemption, to be heard at least within the hundred feet of the property line where I was. Well, they told me that wasn't true, and I tried to show them the city ordinance, and they didn't want to see that, so I was cited. And I tried to straighten the citation out, I went and spoke with several people trying to get this thing down, but I was told that the officer was right, went to Turner Fairs, they told me they would do an investigation, but not a thorough investigation, they was only going to investigate the officers that was involved. I said, well, they are the ones who I'm complaining against. And also, I asked for a copy of their report. The report wasn't ready, it took eight days, and I finally got the report, and when I read the report, I saw that the report had been fraudulently altered with, they had placed certain areas in the report to strengthen the citation that they read me, so they thought I was going to let it go. So I spoke with the city prosecutor, and he told me he'll look into it, but because the Turner Fairs decided to agree with the decorated officers that the city was pursuing to prosecute, and I said, well, then let's take it far as we can take it. And I dare not, like I say, call names, because I'm scheduled to go in the courts to have a pre-trial on September the fourth at nine o'clock in the morning, but I really ask that this council would speak with the Longview Police Department and explain to them the exemption part of the city ordinance of noise and nuisance, and let them know that when we are within the confines of a hundred feet, that we are not in violation. I was informed to turn the radio down, I turned the radio down, and five to twenty minutes later, the officers came with a citation. Thank you.
Pastor, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
And I know if this is a civil matter now, that you can't go too far into it, but I've had a similar situation at my church up on, off of Dundee Road, and because we have a facility that they allow parishioners to use for weddings and so forth, and numerous times, the police department's been out there because of the noise ordinance, but every time that they've been there, it was due to a neighbor calling and complaining.
Yes, sir.
Do you think maybe, nobody picked up the phone?
I asked them, no call. They said, we heard you.
And I know you've been here before, because I remember you, and we've talked about it. So you've given us some information?
Yes, sir.
And we'll, like I said, it's a civil matter now, so we'll just, I mean, obviously, we, as a council, don't condone any, you know, monkeying around with a dad gum report or fraudy reports, anything like that, so we understand what you're saying, but we're going to leave that with the legal department at this time, but we do appreciate you coming and sharing with us.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, Pastor, thank you. Okay, I have no other speaker cards except for zoning items. Next item is a presentation of a twenty-year service award to Detective Eric Hewitt. Chief Dingler.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Mr. Willard, tonight we want to recognize one of our employees that's hit the milestone of twenty years. Detective Eric Hewitt, if you'd step up here, please. If you want to talk, I'll let you talk, too. Let me tell you about Detective Hewitt. He began his career with the Longview Police Department in 1992. He's worked in patrol, as a patrol officer, and then also as a field training officer. He was with the Street Crimes Unit and served as a hostage negotiator and recruiting officer for the Training Division. Eric went into the Criminal Investigation Division in 2001, and has worked in the Crimes Against Persons and the Crimes Against Property section. He's currently assigned to the Technical Investigations Section, where he investigates juvenile crime. Detective Hewitt received the Rookie of the Year Award and was selected as Detective of the Year in 2003. He's a highly motivated professional employee, and that's what the police department is proud of, is so that we have professional people that work for us and provide professional police services. So congratulations on your twenty years of dedicated services to the citizens. You also get a plaque. And this is a certificate of appreciation presented to Eric Hewitt in recognition and appreciation of twenty years of outstanding and dedicated service to the Longview Police Department and to the citizens of Longview, Texas.
Thanks for the city council. We have some great being women over there at that other building, and I just want to let you know, they're family, friends, and they're more than. And I appreciate everything that y'all do for us, and continue to do it for us. We appreciate it. We're going to do whatever we need to do to help y'all, and that's what we're here for. And once again, thanks to you for the twenty years.
Thank you. Okay, council, we have the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda council would like to pull for separate consideration? Mr. Allen?
I just want to make one comment on the revisions on the purchasing order. I talked with Ms. Jane Latch, I don't know if she's here tonight, this afternoon, and a new employee that's heading up our purchasing department, and she did an excellent job, gave me very good answers, and I just want to say thank you for a new person on the job.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, if not, may I have a motion on the consent agenda? Have a motion?
Second.
Second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Next item is our zoning items. Item A is a public hearing to consider application Z-1205. Mr. Shirley.
Members of council, Mr. Willard. The applicant is requesting to rezone from single-family SF-2 to single-family SF-4. As you can see, it's located at the corner of Greystone and McCann Road, adjacent to the North Business Park, the Leadco North Business Park. This is consistent with the future land use map and the surrounding areas, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, council questions? This item requires a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. I have a card from Roger Cavanus, speaker card. Yes, are you here? Okay. Any questions for Mr. Cavanus? Okay, is there anybody else in the audience would like to speak to this matter? Not, the public hearing is closed. Council may have a motion. Have a motion? Second on favor, say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Item B, to consider application PD-1208. Mr. Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant is requesting to rezone from single-family SF-4 to planned development single-family detached. This is a copy of the site plan. They are basically doing twenty-nine lots as a second phase to the Branch Creek subdivision that is currently under development, under construction with homes. This is just a phase two, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions, Mr. Shirley, on item B. Not, this item requires a public hearing. I do not have any speaker cards for this item. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to that, to this matter? Not, the public hearing is closed. Council may have a motion. Have a motion, the second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Item C, consider application PD-1209.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant is requesting to rezone from planned development office PD-83-10 to planned development multifamily. Here's a copy of the site plan that they're proposing. It is for a four-unit multifamily, single-story with access off of Fairmont. This is at the corner of East Fairmont and McCann Road. This planned development that was currently there was for an office complex that was approved in 1983. This is consistent with adjacent zoning to the south, and is an appropriate redevelopment of the property because of the proximity to McCann Road. Staff doesn't feel that it's appropriate for new single-family development because of the traffic there, but we do feel that multifamily is a lesser intense zoning and use than the already existing office that is there. We do recommend approval, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Mr. Allen?
Mr. Shirley. It's currently zoned planned development office, which to me would be a higher density. Is this a requirement? Aren't you lowering the density?
Yes, we are lowering the density, but because a planned development is based on an approved site plan and specific uses, since they are changing that, does require basically an amendment to that planned development.
Okay. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Frost.
How far from McCann is that entry? Not very far.
It's not. I don't have the dimensions on there, but basically, they're starting at this property line with their radius and going, you know, I believe twenty-five, thirty feet, whatever the requirements are there. The access is not the best, it's not a great location for access, but it's better to have the access come off of Fairmont than off of McCann, especially with the text dot requirements.
Any other questions? This item requires a public hearing, the public hearing is now open. I have a speaker card from Richard Henson. Ms. Henson, did you want to speak to this matter? Okay, okay. Mr. Henson is a developer, all right. I also have a speaker card from Dennis Rand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I have the adjacent property to that on Fairmont, at 803 Fairmont, which is back up to the west side of that.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and get them to pull that up. Sean? Okay, so that next lot to the, I guess that'd be to the west.
Correct.
That one right there.
And really, even though, on a personal note, I'm not necessarily happy with it, but that's not necessarily why I'm here today. What I'm here today is really to address what I feel is going to be a traffic safety issue. When you make that turn onto there, there's three lanes that come down to there. Obviously, there's a westbound lane for Fairmont, there's a center lane that turns left onto McCann, or goes straight across, and of course, a right turn only lane. When you're coming out of where they're going to have their driveway, you are going to be in front of where, if there's two or three cars there, you would not be able to make a left-hand turn. So it's almost always, especially during rush hour, always going to be a right turn only for them. If they do decide to go south, then they would have to cross over that lane. People come down Fairmont at a pretty good clip, and people turning on there from McCann making a left-hand turn are usually going pretty quick, and if anybody's ever been on that street corner, especially during rush hour, it's going to be pretty tough. You're putting ten parking spaces, four units, let's just say worst-case scenario, two cars per unit, that's a possibility of eight people leaving and coming and leaving from there on a daily basis, maybe several times a day. So I just feel that there's a potential traffic hazard of people coming in off McCann, coming up Fairmont, either hitting somebody or getting in or out. So that's my biggest concern with that.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Frost.
Would a particular time of day warrant a no-left turn sign there? Or would it be only a right turn in a specific time during the day, just have only right turns?
You know, that would definitely be advantageous both in the morning and the afternoon busy time. Seriously, when I make that turn, or either turn coming up Fairmont, there's a circular driveway in front of my building. I never use the bottom one, which is going to be further away from the street than there. That lot is about seventy-five feet at that point. If you take away the twenty-five feet for the driveway, then you're only talking about fifty feet coming off of there. My, the driveway that I use and that we use for my property is a hundred and fifty feet from that, from that street corner, and when you make that turn, you better have your blinker on, because somebody is right up on you. So it's pretty treacherous.
Could something like that be added?
Mr. Shirley?
It has to be studied in the traffic people, I guess.
Certainly, council can add any conditions to approval that they wish, and, you know, certainly that would be something that y'all could consider, condition for the signage and the time and turning movements.
When this went before P and Z, did this come up with P and Z?
Yeah, they did discuss the traffic issues, and, you know, it's a difficult situation because there's really no good answer, you know. With McCann being under, you know, text dot standards, they're not going to issue a driveway permit, so the only alternative is to have something on Fairmont. My opinion is that another single-family residence there is not appropriate because of the traffic on McCann and the frontage, you know, you're starting to see a lot of people want to get away from that.
Well, Fairmont, I mean, up and down Fairmont, there's these types of units going in pretty much everywhere up and down Fairmont. Okay, you know, I mean, we could, hang on a second, we could put a stipulation in like that. Hard to enforce, okay? But you could put something like that, but I'm not exactly sure it wouldn't, you know, that it would really affect anything, because people are going to do what people are going to do. So we still have a public hearing, so excuse me one second. We're going to go ahead and call the next speaker, and then we'll discuss this some more, okay? Thank you, sir. I have Mr. Charles Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Dean. I'm Charles Phillips, I live at 1503 McCann, which is the adjacent lot to the north. And we purchased this property in November of 1997, and that was, they still had no-through truck signs on McCann at that time. We all know what a traffic problem it is, but what I really would like to point out to the city is that at some point in time prior to my purchasing property, the city installed sewer overflow relief drains in my front yard and in the neighbor to my north. This is not for our sewerage, it is for the backup out of the main line, which is, at the present time, somewhere out underneath McCann Road. When we notice drainage coming out of these relief deals, we call the city. Granted, you, they come out promptly, they take care of it, it might take them one to three days to do it, but they are re-establishing the flow of sewerage, which is to the south, in front of the property that wants to become now four more home units, and that would mean four new connections to that sewer line. I am concerned about what is going to happen about that, and I understand the other things that I have to do with later on, should you approve it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. Is Keith Bond, Keith isn't here now? Okay, we're going to ask Mr. Henson, allow him to talk. Richard?
Hello, I'm Richard Henson, wish to develop this property, and I will, the utilities, last conversation, that's something that public utilities and engineering can work out. Obviously, if, we would have to upgrade the utilities if they're not adequate. Obviously, if, we would have to upgrade the utilities if they're not adequate. The location, high traffic, the access in and out of the drive is terrible. I'll be the first to admit, it's very terrible. But the property has been vacant. It's been planned development office since nineteen eighty-three, so you can't just let it sit there and not develop it. It's vacant lot.
Oh, vacant lot?
Yes.
Okay, it's behind.
It's a lot.
I'm thinking about.
It's vacant lot, terrible access, but what I'm proposing, the zoning I'm proposing is less intense than the office use that it's currently zoned. Less intense impact.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bonds? We've discussed the traffic issue. On the utility issue, Ms. Phillips is saying that a lot of the overflow problems for his property and his neighbor to the north is created by that piece of property, but it's an empty lot. I mean, so is that just from, you know, sewerage coming, well, it doesn't go from south to north, it actually runs from north to south, is that not correct?
I would assume it would go from north to south down McCann, but I'll have to look into it.
Okay. So the backup problem that Mr. Phillips is referring to, is it due to the fact that maybe there's some issue with the infrastructure on that particular lot?
No, not at all. I would assume the main would have some clog in it. I'm sure if it goes from north flowing south, it would flow by, you know, there's a little subdivision, I mean, shopping center, I guess. The mouse is not working. They're on the east side. So there might be, there's a restaurant in there, so we might have had some issues in backing up that direction.
Okay, that's right, there are several on the.
So I would assume that's the case, and it sounds like he has a cleanout in his front yard, which is a good thing, and so if it clogs, then it comes out that way. But I'll be glad to look into it, clean the line out, televise it, try to find out what's wrong with it. If there's anything wrong with it, of course, he'll fix it.
Well, what Mr. Henson just said, that, you know, if they, I mean, if he's going to, you know, if this was approved and he put that facility there, that engineering would have to approve the infrastructure. So obviously, you are, developmental services would not approve a project if the infrastructure was deemed as, you know, not able to handle those units.
Sure, you know, I would be shocked if four more residents would cause a problem with the capacity on the sewer line, to be honest with you.
Well, it's not necessarily the capacity. It sounds like there's some obstruction.
Right, which is not his fault.
Somewhere. I mean, because that's probably why they put those cleanouts on Mr. Phillips' property and his neighbors.
But we need to televise it, it sounds like, and see what the problem is and fix it.
Well, could you do this? Could you maybe, I've got Mr. Phillips's address, and you see what it is, but what we need to do is go back and review the, however many times this has happened since these were put in, and see if we're making progress as far as correcting that problem because it's.
Absolutely.
No sense to keep letting that go. Okay, thank you. I don't have any other speaker cards. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this matter? Okay, then the public hearing is closed. Council, I need a motion. Council, Mr. Allen, excuse me, you had.
I just had a question on what Mr. Frost was talking about. If you limit the left-hand turn and they want to go south, and you make them turn right, they're going to have to, what is that, is it La Vista? La Vista Drive?
No, no. He's saying if they take, if they turn right out and take a quick left.
They're going to have to go down that La Vista Drive, and I don't know that the people that live on La Vista Drive are going to want that extra traffic going down their street if you limit the north-south egress, so to speak.
Well, I think what Mr. Rand is saying is that, is that the traffic backs up from McCann on Fairmont, from McCann on back to the west. So they're probably not going to have any easier time turning down La Vista at certain times of day as they would be turning left coming out of the parking lot.
One thing that we can do also, we can certainly visit with text dot and show them the situation and see if they'd be willing to allow an additional access. You know, having two, it might alleviate, you know, if it was controlled, maybe just a ride-in or a ride-out and not allow crossover access. That might, you know, we'll certainly explore that. I don't know that that's going to be very fruitful, but we'll certainly.
I think it's very important to find some way where this property can be developed because it's been sitting there for many years, just as a vacant lot.
We recently, on the Dalewood and Fourth Street, installed, neighbors were watching it for several weeks and months, and we recently installed a no-left turn sign there at certain from one to seven.
Yeah, and I think that's what you're proposing here.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Yeah, just a certain time.
And I don't know, Chief's not here, but I don't know if there's, you know, if we've had enough time to get any kind of historical data in terms of wrecks or traffic flow or whatnot at this point. Okay, any other questions? Okay, council, then I need a motion.
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve? I have a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, but let me say this, motion passes with, let me back up a second, Mr. City Attorney. I understand that some provisions were asked for, and I may need to redo this, but the provisions were asked for as far as limiting, you know, a left-hand turn except, you know, at certain times of the day.
I want to do is make those conditions part of the motion.
But we're going to come back to that, and so we won't make that part of the motion. The other thing, we'll make sure, is that engineering is going to go back also and scope the line, but also in working with Mr. Henson to make sure that, you know, the infrastructure is such that we don't make this problem worse than it already is. Okay, so let's, I just.
You want to add a condition to that?
Yeah, I just want to add the condition that that no-left turn, and you can, you know how to word this, no-left turn at certain hours of the day, and I would think primarily during, you know, peak traffic hours.
Why don't we just reopen the question with the motion in a second, and then the person that made the motion can add that condition, and we can vote on it again.
Okay, then we'll do it. We'll reopen that, and the motion was made by Mr. Allen.
Make a motion that we approve with the stipulation that the right-hand, no, excuse me, left-hand turn be not allowed, how you going to say that, at certain hours of the
Yeah, peak hours of the day. And they know what the peak hours of the day.
Restricted, restricted.
Yeah.
Yeah, peak hours of the day.
Okay.
Well, we could, if you go with how it was approved, and I mean, it could be a trap, Keith, you could do that through traffic, just a traffic control device, then it's not tied to the land. It'd be the responsibility of the department. They could go in and they could make the sign, say, that would give more flexibility to do that. So the more I think about it, we can just treat it as a traffic control device that staff needs to go out.
So do we still need to make the motion?
I don't think so at this point.
So what we've already done is good.
You've approved it, and then, you know, once the development goes in, Keith will need to go out there and.
And where's Mr. Rand?
From council, we can, you know, do that as a staff.
Where's Mr. Rand? He's, I don't see. Oh, there you are, okay. And we will communicate this with you, okay, Mr. Bonds? We'll communicate that with Mr. Rand, okay, as it's been approved. Okay, thank you. Item D, public hearing to consider, application PD twelve dash ten.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant is requesting to rezone from single-family SF four-two planned development for a private school and daycare. This is the former Forest Park Middle School, Longview Christian School purchased, recently purchased the building and is converting it from a middle school to a full-service campus. It would also include daycare. That is the purpose for the planned development status is because daycares are generally only allowed in general retail zoning districts, but because of the, because of the full-service nature, staff feels that it is appropriate to allow a daycare facility in and adjacent to a residential area, and we do recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, council? Okay, this item requires a public hearing. I do not have any speaker cards for this item. Anyone here would like to speak to this matter? If not, the public hearing is closed. Council may have a motion?
Move.
Have a motion? Second? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Item E, public hearing to consider, PD twelve dash eleven. Mr. Shirley?
Thank you, Mayor Dean. The applicant is requesting to amend the original planned development, PD forty-one, PD forty-eight, and PD oh-three dash seven to allow for the expansion and remodel of the hospital and the addition of the medical office buildings. Here is the proposed site plan that shows the additional wing, the renovations to the western portion of the building and the new medical office building. Part of the reconstruction is to create a new boulevard entrance and create a true front entrance to the property, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. We do recommend approval.
Questions? If not, this item does require a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. I think there's someone here representing this project that would like to say a few words or answer questions. CFO is here also, I think. Okay, we have Tim Vaughn, who's the chairman of the Longview Regional Board.
Thank you, Mayor. Tim Vaughn, I'm chairman of the Board of Trustees of Longview Regional Medical Center. If there are any questions I can answer, we're excited about this project and moving forward. We're excited because Longview and this whole area is just blessed to kind of have the kind of health care that it has for our citizens in this area, and we want to add to that as we're basically doubling the campus in tremendous economic value, economic development value, but more importantly, continue to upgrade the health care for people in this area, Mayor, council.
And can you tell us what size project this is when, you know, project's done? I mean, how large a project this is?
Well, Mayor, it will double the size of the campus. We're going up on the east and the west end, and we're moving, going out and up. We're changing the entrance off of Medical Circle Drive, so we have a boulevard and a newer entrance, so the entrance will not be off of Fourth Street now. So we'll create just a better campus, better use for the patients. All the beds will be over two-hundred-and-thirty. Beds will be all private now. We're expanding and creating more physician offices on campus so they're closer to their patients when they're in the hospitals.
Okay. Any questions to Mr. Vaughn? Tim, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, council, anyone else here would like to speak to this matter? If not, the public hearing is closed. Council may have a motion? Have a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion passes. And I just want to make one other comment. We are blessed to have two really great hospitals in our community, both that continue to invest money in our community to improve and enhance, you know, the quality of our health care. One thing that I'm excited about in particular about the project is in visiting with the CEO of Longview Regional and talking about, you know, issuing the contract. He is very determined that local contractors will be used if at all possible, and if not, I think, well, I can't repeat exactly what his words were, but if they are not used, there better be a very good reason why they are not being used. So I think, you know, we've been blessed in this community with, you know, school projects, et cetera. There's a lot of people here, now that those projects are over, there's a lot of people here needing to work, contractors needing to work, so hopefully this will be a shot in on a lot of them. Okay? Okay, council, next item, action items. Consider resolution, appointing a mayor pro temp. Okay, council, this is the time of the year that we select a new mayor pro temp, and just to remind you in the community, basically the way this is done, we rotate from seat to seat, and the selection is made depending on, A, has a person served or not served, and then the second consideration is if they have not served, are they the senior member to anyone else that has not served? Okay, so if we move down the line from Mr. Manley, Mr. Allen has served, my friend over here, Mr. Sims, has served, Gary, you two new. So Ms. Williams, the seat, if you're agreeable to accept the role as mayor pro temp?
Yes.
If you are, okay, then I'd like to make a motion that Ms. Cash Williams be named the mayor pro temp. Okay, have a motion, second? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. And I know, I know she will keep that same enthusiasm. I see some of her friends getting up back here. But I know she will keep that same enthusiasm that she's already started with, so I look forward to working with you, Cash. Okay, then the next item is consider resolution, authorizing and directing the city manager into a contract with SEMA Solutions Group. Mr. Ewing?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Staff has been in discussions probably about the last year about our email system. We've run into reliability issues and just in general, there's been unhappiness with it for various reasons. What's held us back from doing anything is just generally the cost, replacing it to a fixed system with new servers and all that. In our research, we found Google Apps for Government. It's a way to subscribe to a service that will provide us an email system. And as we continued to research, we found that we could also, it also provides tools such as documents, spreadsheets, presentations, and other tools that we feel, once we get the system fully in place, it provides some collaboration and some productivity improvements among the staff. And over time, most importantly, we get all that and we save money. We think over the, you know, there's certainly an upfront cost, you know, for transitioning. We recognize that, but over the next few years, by avoiding costs for our current licenses and maintenance agreements that we have for our current system, we can transfer those costs, utilize those costs for this purpose, and also save in other licenses, and also file server space, reduce the number of servers that we need to utilize and maintain, and that, of course, brings, we help productivity in our IT division as well. So we're excited about the opportunity. This contract is a state, we're utilizing a state contract. There's an annual cost of about thirty-six thousand dollars. The remainder of this cost here is for the actual transfer of the data from the current system to the new system. SEMA Solutions is, has the RFP before you. They are here to, they can answer any questions. Mr. John Alday and Todd Brown can answer any specific technical questions. I can try to answer any funding questions you might have, but.
Well, I know Mr. Allen as much of a computer guru as he is, I'm sure he has questions.
With that, we recommend approval.
Counsel, do y'all have any questions, Mr. Ewing? Gary? Mr. Ewing, how long is it going to take to get this Google app into place?
Yeah, about sixty days.
Sixty days?
At once it's executed, once the contract's executed. We'd hope by September, October, December.
Okay, Ms. Williams?
I just wanted to, when I read the information that you sent us, I want to commend staff for really taking the time to put together a proposal that showed us the hard and the soft savings over a five-year period. That's huge, and Google is so important. It's swept across the country, and I'm just excited that our city is getting on board, and I think that will definitely improve our efficiency, so thank you, Mr. Ewing.
We appreciate those comments, and I'll give Justin Kier, our Information Services Manager, the credit. He brought that idea, and we appreciate him, him and his staff going out and pushing for these types of changes to improve our processes and our customer service.
Okay, any other questions? If not, may I have a motion? Have a motion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, thank you, Jeff. Thanks, thank you all for being here tonight. Then we're going to move over to items of community interest. My new friend, the new face of Mr. John Sims here.
Well.
Had to put a lead weight in his pocket before long, all that weight.
Surprise, surprise.
Looks good. Keep going.
I don't have a thing tonight.
Well, there you go, speechless.
I'm speechless. That's unusual.
Like the, what is it, on Wizard of Oz? Speechless. Okay. Gary?
Mr. Mayor, the city of Longview gave a proclamation on Sunday to Womack High School, which I guess stayed in educational stage from eighteen eighty-eight to nineteen seventy. They want, they sent their thanks and their gratitude for that proclamation, Mr. Mayor, and said, thank you.
Great, great.
And the, the police department, Longview Police Department had. And the, the Longview, the police department, Longview Police Department has a home security program, it includes checking locks, doors, windows, lights, and a security system at your home, and it's free of charge, don't cost you anything, so call your police station or your local par office to get that information. I got one more thing, Mr. Mayor.
Keep going, man.
Uh, I got office hours now, Tuesday and Thursday from 3:00 to 4:00. You call Ms. Judy in the city manager's office, David Willard, and she'll set up an appointment for you, and it's Tuesday and Thursday from 3:00 to 4:00.
Good deal.
That's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
Can I get, can I get an appointment?
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay, Ms. Casher?
I want to remind everybody, well, encourage everybody to participate in the NAACP Prayer Breakfast, in lieu of the banquet this year, we're having a prayer breakfast, and it will be Saturday, August the 4th at 8:30 a.m. at Divine Catering. Glad to see the, our local NAACP president, Mr. Brandon Johnson, here, $10 to attend. Lastly, real quick, well, hold on, there'll be a ribbon cutting tomorrow at Longview Museum of Fine Arts, I have to remember to say that because I'm an art enthusiast, at 11:30 a.m. I will be there, please come out. I want to share something with you that I was asked to read from one of my constituents. Take care of the South Side. I'm a citizen of Longview and I've lived here since 1980. I'm not happy with how the South Side is being taken care of, we pay taxes too. I used to work for the city of Longview myself for a combined total of 13 years. I know how everything should be taken care of. It's a shame and disgrace how it looks, and when you call and complain, you don't get a response, and there's some other verbiage there, and it's signed by Mr. Ennis McAllister of Longview. Hopefully, Mr. McAllister, you are listening, and I would like to just assure you that myself, the mayor, and the council, we remain committed to the entire city of Longview. More specifically, when we speak in terms of the South Side of Longview, yes, there are several forthcoming projects, such as the bond that we passed last year, that includes streets and sidewalks. We are very much so aware that there are, there are lots of streets that need constant repair on the South Side of town, being the oldest part of Longview, and we are working to make sure that we take care of those issues. And also, another thing that we have going on, an example would be Iron Bridge Creek. The city has been there, we've been there on three different occasions and have repaired that. Water and sewer replacements are ongoing. Since being in office over the last year, I can't tell you the number of times I have called Public Works and they have graciously agreed to go out, and even if it's something that the city, that we cannot reasonably take care of, between Roland McPhee and Keith Bonds, they will just make a personal trip to a resident's home. So, I just want to say that because we are diligently working to make some changes. Change takes time, and I just wanted to take the time to assure Mr. McAllister that we are on it. So, thank you, and, and thank you for your letter, Mr. McAllister, and look forward to speaking with you, because I will be contacting you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Casher. Mr. Frost?
I read something about a sanitation truck driver contest, one of our, one of our women driving a truck is in a state contest, but...
Yeah, I read the same thing. What's that?
Chris Hudson.
Chris Hudson.
Chris Hudson, well, congratulations, she made it to the...
Do they get to go to Texas Motor Speedway with the sanitation truck, or what?
Runny guy.
Okay, well, congratulations, Chris. Mr. Allen?
Yes, sir. If this weather gets any better, all those people that go to Florida for the summer vacations are gonna be coming to Longview, Texas.
Gets in by rain?
It's amazing, this morning I was driving around, it was 78 degrees, and I heard last year at this time, it was 103. I do have sympathy for those people in other parts of the country that are burning up, but we're sure enjoying it down here in Texas.
There you go. Okay, um, we, we want to recognize Longview Ambucks II, and in particular and especially Carmella Davis. Several years, a number of years ago, because of the cost of putting on a quality fireworks display for 4th of July, the city had to discontinue doing that, and at that time, it was picked up by a group of individuals, and today, it is organized, supported, and funded by Longview Ambucks II, and I know what the cost used to be, and it was in the neighborhood of $40,000 to $50,000. Carmella Davis, like anyone that knows her, has worked as a Trojan horse on so many great projects for the city of Longview, and here's just another example of her getting out front, taking the lead position, and everybody that attended that, that festival, fireworks festival, said it was fabulous, and so Carmella, I know you're probably working hard like you normally do on your taxes and everything else, but thank you, and thank the Longview Ambucks II organization, and please continue with the great quality efforts that you do for us, thank you. After recent storms, the sanitation department encourages residents to call their offices at 903-237-1250 in order to schedule bulky item pickup. You must call to schedule a pickup time and date. What happens is, this is a first-come, first-served basis, it's a courtesy service at the city office, if you'll stack your limbs, trees, et cetera, at the curb, we'll pick it up, but you have to call to line up the schedule. I've had residents call me that had their trash out, or their limbs out, and the truck went right by and didn't pick them up, and why didn't they pick mine up? Because they went to the neighbor next to me and picked theirs up. Well, because they're on a schedule, and they're trying to go to first-come, first-served, so please make sure to call and schedule them to come pick your materials up. The other thing is, I know that the volume of limbs, et cetera, this week has grown substantially. We are out all day, every day picking up, I know some of the council members, especially Ms. Williams, has received some phone calls, and that might be where Mr., is it McAllister or maybe coming from, but, but the reality is, is just the sheer volume that we're dealing with, we're trying to get in front of it, and we will work overtime, double time, irregardless to make sure we get it done in a reasonable amount of time, so please bear with us, but please call and schedule your pickup. 23, 903-237-1250. Also, the compost site will be open between now and July 20th for residents as well as Longview businesses. The compost site accepts yard waste such as tree limbs and leaves. For more information, call 903-236-3099. The Great Texas Balloon Race, right around the corner, July 23rd through July 29th. This year's race is part of the U.S. National Championships. For more information, call Elaine Reynolds at 903-237-4000. Okay? At this time, council will, we will adjourn to executive session deliberating, deliberations regarding real property under Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, consideration of the purchase and value of real property located in the Hamilton McNutt Survey, A129. City council may reconvene in public session for action on the above items discussed in a closed meeting or executive session. Council adjourned.